Wilmer City Council for Monday, March 18th, roll call.
Mayor Calvin?
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Here.
Mesky?
Here.
Schwantes?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Alvarado?
Here.
Osmus?
Here.
Plowman?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
Due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented? Seeing and hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented.
Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Consent items. Ms. Thompson?
On tonight's consent agenda for council's approval, we have the city council minutes of March 4th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of March 11th, Park and Recreation Board minutes of March 6th, an application for exempt permit from the Wilmer Senior High Trap Team, the accounts payable report, March 1 through March 14th, and for council's acceptance, the Wilmer Police Commission minutes of February 4th, and the building report for the month of February, and council's information, an invest in Wilmer Board meeting summary of February 27th, and the City Hall Task Force meeting summary of February 14th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items. Discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all on role call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next is our open forum, Mr. Stefan Daleski, or Steph Daleski. If you state if you live in the city or outside of the city.
Stefan Daleski and I live in the city. We've had a rough winter. The first snowfall happened in December. It was pretty much around till last week. I took a lot of pictures on the February 21st snow emergency and also the March 11th snow emergency. A number of businesses downtown are somewhat refusing to clean their sidewalks. And I go around about 5 o'clock the night before and I talk to a number of them, tell them that, you know, it needs to be cleaned. Ask them to clean it. It's responsibility of being a landowner downtown or a business owner. And they just kind of nod their heads and come back the next morning and the city has cleaned it. They're up on the sidewalk plowing it off. And that's happened twice now this winter. And I've got a number of pictures. I'm going to be back. I'm going to be to one of your Public Works meetings with all those photos dated, timed, addresses. And then I'm going to probably be back to a city council meeting. We need to look at something. There isn't really an ordinance, and I've been calling all over the state to find out what kind of ordinances are in Litchfield and Brainerd and different places. Nobody really has an ordinance. They just deal with it. They say if there's something happens and we need to address it, then we go over there with the police. But the garbage task force that we put together kind of went after things. And this was taken the other day, too. This is a picture of a garbage can full of light bulbs downtown on Benson Avenue. And two days later, it was gone. And they didn't haul it away. A garbage service picked it up. But we're soon to be in the grass season, too. And some of the places in town get to be rather long. I've taken pictures and I generally send them to Kelsey and Sarah at City Hall. And it's generally, I don't take a picture until the grass gets to be about a foot high. And some of them I just happen to drive by every couple of days and I notice it. And after it gets to be rather tall, then I take the picture and I send it back to City Hall. And then they write a letter and you got seven days and then eventually the thing gets hanged. But I just wanted to address that and bring it to your attention that something needs to be done. If you want to be a businessman downtown or a business owner or a building owner, there's a responsibility to the people that are next to you and everybody else that parks downtown. The county offices, they come over to pick up stuff and I usually ask them, knowing that there's a foot of snow on some of the sidewalks between us and them. And they, they mention it. And I've walked around the Litchfield Avenue block and it's just, it's dangerous and it's unsightly. And if we're going to talk about rebuilding Wilmer and make it a great place to be, we need to start on the little things. Because it's the little things that eat at people all the time. The big ones, you know, you kind of choke them down and go on with it. But that's pretty much what I wanted to say and hope to see in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we'll have the hearing, the 2019 Street and Other Improvement Hearing. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight is the night for the public hearing. The report I have in front of you or you have in front of you is the, basically, you're largely the same as the improvement report. So I guess I would leave it up to you if you want me to go through the whole thing again, or whether you would like to turn it over to public comment first. We can mix things up a little bit here if you, if, at your desire.
Councilmember Plowman, do you have a preference as the Chair of Public Safety, Public Works?
I guess I would just, I would defer to the rest of the council if there's further information that the council would like to know based on this presentation that they don't believe, information that they don't believe they have yet. Or if everybody's comfortable with the information contained. Nods yes, then I-
I'm comfortable with going to the public hearing and then you answering questions. That's what you're thinking of doing?
I can do that if you, yeah, if you wish. That might save us some time.
I think, right? Right. It was presented to Public Works, Public Safety, and it was presented to us last, at our last meeting.
Yeah, the report was presented to you and then, of course, we had to advertise for the hearing for the, for the affected landowners. Yep.
As, as long as nobody else with the council has further questions regarding the presentation, I think that's probably a good idea.
That's what we did last year and I just wanted to know if we'll do it that way again.
Yep.
I thought it worked smoothly last year.
Okay.
I'll open the public hearing at this point. If you're here to speak about the, the improvements for a specific street, if you would come to the podium, state what, your name, what street you're here to speak about, and then Mr. Christensen or his staff will be here to, to assist you with that process. So go ahead and come to the, come, in an early fashion, come up to the microphone and we'll take care of the business. So this meeting is open. Go ahead.
Thank you, council members and mayor. My name is Michelle Maratsky and I am at 13th Street Southeast. We were here last year and our Stub Street project was put on hold. I was very disappointed at that time. And now I understand that the project contains more all the way to Highway 12. So I just wanted to come once again and voice my support of the project. Our streets over on that part of town are terrible. They've, I feel they've gotten a little worse over the last year, you know, more snow, more water, more everything. So that really is it. I just want to voice my support for the project to be done this year.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak? Anybody else that wishes to speak on the public hearing on any of the improvements? If you'd state your name and then what street you're here to reference.
I'm Linda Schamone. I live on 15th Street Southeast.
Okay.
At the present time, we do not have sidewalks on our streets and we really don't need them. Will they be adding that to the project, being we do not have them at this time?
I don't believe sidewalks were included, Mr. Christensen. Is that correct? Right, there will be no sidewalks added.
And when will we know just how much this is going to be costing each of us?
Either the city clerk or Mr. Christensen, do you have those numbers? Mr. Christensen will get those for you. And it'll be on a per foot basis and this would be a total reconstruct, so.
Right. And what we're leaning, what we're doing right now, it's in the $80 to $85 per lineal foot range and we won't know exactly until the bids come in. But that's what, that's what it's been in the last couple of years and that's what we've been leaning towards.
Thank you.
Yep. And then there is a senior deferment on that as well if you're a senior citizen, so. Anyone else that wishes to speak? Go ahead, come to the, come to the mic. Would you like to speak or not?
I have a question.
Yep, come to the mic, please. This is a public hearing, this is, this is the place to talk, right? Right? We're all nice.
I'm Tisha Ellinger and I live on 15th Street Southwest. And it's, says it's going to be an overlay. Is the cost less?
Generally speaking, it is. Mr. Christensen will address that.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, typical cost for an overlay, significantly less and you're in the, we're looking at $40 to $45 range per lineal foot of frontage.
So you take the total frontage of your property times it, times $40 to $45. And on the, a total reconstruct, it's 80 to 85. And that's why we try to do the reconstrucks.
And, and I should have said this early, too. Anyone that wants to call in, we can get them their exact footage and their exact dollars after the bids, of course, but we can get them any of that information at any time if you call in.
Anybody else wish to speak? Go ahead and state your name and what street you're here to speak about.
I'm Tom Kedrowski. I have a rental house on Southeast 16th Street. And when we get the footage, can we pay for it upfront to void any interest or charge to that dollar amount?
Certainly, yes. You can prepay. Once you get the bill, you can prepay that and not have any interest accrued. But there is a date that has to be paid by, do you remember what that is?
October 31st.
Has to be paid by October 31st.
Okay.
Sure. And you would be under a total reconstruct?
Yep, yep.
Anybody else wish to speak to the, to the improvements? Once we close it, it comes to the council table and then the discussion is over from the public, so. If anybody that wishes to speak, this will be your time. Seeing and hearing none, Mr., I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My name is Juan Benzi. I live on 15th Street Southeast. And you're talking about linear footage and all that. I don't understand what that means far as what's it going to cost. My property is 50 feet on 15th Street by 150 feet on Becker. So what does that mean far as cost?
What's your address side? Is the address on 15th or on Becker?
On 15th, which is 50 feet on 15th, 150 feet on Becker.
Right, and on, on those streets, you get charged by what is on the address side, but then being a corner lot, is there another equation that goes into that, Mr. Christensen?
There is, but I believe you're only, as a residential, you're only charged on the address side. And so the, the side lot, if you will, in your case, would not be charged. So it's only on the Becker side or the address side.
Right, but what does that mean far as you're talking?
So if you have 50 feet and it's $85, it'll cost you $40 to $4,250.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Check with those two behind you.
Sorry?
Check with the one in the blue behind you. State your name and then what street you're here to speak about.
I'm Marla Spader and I live on 13th Street Southeast. And I was wondering, for the bill, do you, do you put that on our real estate tax, real estate statement or is it, we have to pay it separately or how does that go?
No, it's put on, it'll be put on your taxes, but then there's a senior deferment. Can you talk about the senior deferment just a little bit, Judy?
There is-
I'm sorry, Ms. Thompson?
Okay, on, on your taxes, if you don't pay it by the prepayment period, it will be spread evenly over the next 10 years on your taxes for principal. And if you do meet some income guidelines, you could qualify for the special deferment, where it would be deferred until the house is sold, it loses homestead, or should you pass? Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak?
Mayor, members of the council, what I'll do in light of that is go to the end of the PowerPoint and discuss dates and maybe some frequently asked questions and then turn it back to you. So as you all know, tonight is the improvement hearing, March 18th. We are planning on letting the bid on April 11th and then, which would bring us to after contracts and things are in, are, and bids are accepted, the assessment hearing would, is, is tentatively scheduled right now for June 19th, in which time we would award the bid and begin construction in July and end that construction with substantial completion in October. Reason to say it that way is, as you know, that the deeper construction, the, the full construction projects or the reconstruct projects, a lot of times we'll, we'll wait and do the final lift or the final pavement, spring of, in this case, it'd be spring of 2020, just in case any soft spots develop or we have another winter like this one and we end up with some additional issues that we got to deal with and then we, we don't disrupt the new pavement. For council action, these are total costs. Oops. Have to look quick, apparently. 5.4 million is total cost and that's all of the projects within this report. And that includes paths and I did remove the traffic signal at this point because of the, the land user that's not coming anymore. So that is, that is the total cost that we're looking at, estimated, of course. Assessment schedules, as mentioned before, you can do a full payment with no interest by October 31st. You'll get reminders in September. And then first payment would be due May 15th if you don't prepay by that October 31st deadline. And then the 15 or $100 or more before November 15th, you can do any types of prepayments are allowed at that point. That's all I have for you, Ms. Mayor and council.
Okay, again, I'll turn it over back to the public. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak after hearing the total dollar amount and also the timelines?
Just one quick question for Mr. Christensen. Are we charged, for example, there's, you have it split out with the reconstruction versus the overlay. Are we, is our footage charged or frontage charged by the total of the project or by what, like for my street, it's reconstruction versus an overlay?
Right.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. The, you would be charged for the reconstruct since your street is the reconstruct. And so that's why we, we separate it out differently and just for round figures, reconstruct will cost 2 million a mile. And those are estimates, obviously, and an overlay is 600,000 a mile. And so that's how we get the dollar amounts that are, that are passed along at that point.
Anybody else from the public that wishes to speak? Mr. Mayor? Got to bring it, got to close the public hearing first.
I'm going to speak as a member of the public.
Oh, sure, okay.
Would you like me to stand out there?
He just has to identify he's a member of the public, correct?
Sure.
Sean Mesky, live on 5th Street Southwest. Just a question because my road is a cul-de-sac and the city has businesses that are on the other end of the cul-de-sac and we have a lot of people in that area who are elderly and have a very hard time walking. What type of accommodations do we have to get people in and out of their homes and particularly in that kind of a spot?
Mr. Christensen?
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Mesky, the, I think, I thought I had a slide for frequently asked questions that, that addressed exactly that and, oh, I do hear. So basically what happens is when the contractors are, when the bids come in, when the contractors are selected, we'll have a pre-construction meeting and at that point, they'll identify the businesses, the residents, the ones that might need additional help and aid to get to their, to their locations, their, their property. And the contractors work with them very well, in, in my opinion, in the last couple of years or couple of projects. And so if, if a little bit additional help is needed, we, the contractors will take care of that or the city will take care of that in one way or the other, so.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else from the public? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council. Council, what are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve the project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to order the improvement and authorized preparation of plans and specs. Discussion, Councilmember Osmus.
Okay, back to the timeline. I know a lot of their question has to do with the cost. After the bids have been let, when can they expect to get their notice of what the cost will be?
I think we're required by statute 30 days' notice ahead of the hearing. Is that right? So minimally, they will get that notice 30 days ahead of that. Like I said, the, the June 19th is tentative. If everything falls into place, as we have it scheduled right now, they will know, you know, mid-May.
Mid-May, okay. I just wanted to make sure that they knew-
Correct.
-when they were going to get their postcard or notification.
Additional questions from the council? Okay, this resolution takes seven of eight votes. So, roll call.
Councilmember Mesky?
Do we have a conflict or not?
He wouldn't have a conflict just that there's work being done, would he?
Sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Mesky, so you are a property owner on one of the streets to be assessed?
Correct.
I do think that could rise to the level of a conflict. There's a couple of things the council could do, is to vote separately on that street and allow Councilmember Mesky simply to abstain from that vote. Or I think Councilmember Mesky could abstain from the resolution on the table right now, which would, I think, change the requirement to make it six of seven. That would be needed to pass.
So do the motioner and the seconder of the motion wish to remove 5th Street Southwest or just proceed with the motion as presented?
Just proceed.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, the direction of the council is to proceed with the motion on the table unless there's a disagreement to that. Seeing and hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Omesky is abstaining.
Right, got to let him state his position, right? You have to state your abstaining.
I live on 5th Street Southwest. I'm a homeowner that's included within, in this jurisdiction. So abstain, but very good.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays, and one abstain.
That roll call passes. Next is a resolution approving the plans and specs and authorizing advertisement for bids.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Can I vote on this one?
Remind you to abstain again.
I'll abstain.
You abstained in the first one.
All right.
Seven ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
That resolution passes as well. Next is the Public Works, Public Safety Committee report for March 6th. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works, Public Safety Committee met on Wednesday, March 6th, 2019, at City Hall. We called the meeting to order at 5:15 and our first agenda item was a public safety update for information only. Staff brought forth for information the police department statistics for the month of February. And I'm wondering, do you happen to have those on hand, chief, or not at the moment?
I, I don't read offhand.
I know that it's in our packet, so we can refer to those stats in the packet. If anybody has questions based on that, we can answer those at this time or direct them towards the chief. No further questions. Then we'll move on to the next item, which was also a discussion item, and that was the Highway 12 realignment and intersection design. The discussion revolved around the design of roundabouts. A principal transportation engineer, Aaron Warford, brought forth for discussion preliminary designs for the realignment of Highway 12 and the intersections, including proposed roundabouts. And just for those of you who don't know, this would be the Highway 12 realignment with regards to the Wilmer Y Railroad project. The roundabouts versus signalized intersections and traffic counts were discussed. Staff noted the project requires municipal consent for approval and therefore will be brought forth to the council for further review at a later date. And if I am correct, and I'll ask Mr. Christensen, I do believe that more information regarding this will be brought to the Public Works Committee before the next council meeting? Is that correct?
Councilmember Plowman, that is correct. This, well, before a future council meeting. This is very preliminary at this point with the, with the roundabouts as they pertain to, to the highway right of way. And the council will have to give consent at whatever design is presented. But we're still very, very preliminary and that's, that's what you saw the other night was just kind of a heads up of what's coming at a future council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Christensen. Yeah, and we, we basically were presented with some very preliminary designs and drafts from a consultant to the engineer regarding this project. And it was kind of to just give us an idea of what might be coming. We were assured that we, you know, before any changes would take place, that information would be coming back to future Public Works for us to see and talk about and whatnot. And then in the future, which is not even given a date yet at this point, it would be brought to the council. So that was for information discussion only, just to kind of keep everybody in the know. The next item that was discussed was also an information item and that was the county construction update for construction projects 2019. Kennedy High County Public Works Director Mel Odens brought forth for information a construction update on upcoming projects. A roundabout will be constructed at, at the County Road 5 and 19th Avenue Southwest intersection. 19th Avenue Southwest will have a two-inch overlay under traffic from First Street to County Road 5. Both projects will require a cooperative agreement with the city to be brought forth to the committee at a later date. And we did have a good discussion at that time about that specific project at the intersection, but also the overlay project and the fact that both projects were going to be happening concurrently, the pros and cons to doing that. And we thought it was a quite productive discussion, but we are going to be receiving more information in the future before it is then brought to the council. The next item is actually a resolution item and this regards Kennedy and Jefferson School parking lots. Ballack engineer Josh Johnson brought forth for information the upcoming lot resurfacing at Kennedy and Jefferson Schools this summer. On-street parking issues and striping was discussed by the committee and staff. A motion was made by Councilmember Osmus and seconded by Councilmember Nelson, directing staff to draft a resolution with parking changes made at Kennedy School. The motion carried and I will introduce that motion now.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to approve parking changes at Kennedy School. Discussion. Seeing and hearing none, roll call. Councilmember Osmus.
I just thought, just to clarify, what that discussion was about is in the past, the drop-off for students has been off of Rice Avenue. And now they're going to change the drop-off to the, the parking lot area and now just the buses will come down Rice Avenue. So it's going to be a lot less traffic for those homeowners on Rice Avenue.
Discussion in the council. Roll call. Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the school's involved with this change then? They know of it?
It was my understanding that the, the school in combination with their engineer is requesting this.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Additional questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
All right, and the final item on the agenda was also for information only and just reminders for our Public Works group. Staff did bring forth for information updates from the Public Works Department on the season snow events. We kind of got a good synopsis of, of what had happened throughout the year, where we're at, a little bit budget-wise, hourly, and whatnot. The committee discussed seasonal parking restrictions, the topic just in general, and also financing of the Cambridge Drainage Project, but no formal action was taken to that effect. And those items will be discussed at the committee level in the future and then brought to the council table. There being no further actions or information from that meeting, I motion to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes to the Public Works Safety Committee. Discussion. I, when I read through the minutes, I did not see anything about the costs on the, on the overtime and stuff for snow plowing. Did I miss it? Was it in the minutes, or was it just a conversation you had?
I believe it was just a discussion point, and I don't know that we had roundabout dollar, that we had specific dollar figures, but I know that that's something that was discussed, discussing in the future because the snow events aren't finished.
Councilmember Osmus.
I think part of how that discussion went was because part of the snow removal would have happened in two thousand eighteen. Some of that went to that budget. And then because we only have up till March or April in the two thousand nineteen budget, they really won't know the impact of what effect it would have on the two thousand nineteen budget until we know what happens in November and December of this year. Because the two fiscal years overlap.
Sure. Additional discussion? All those in favor of filing the, the Public Works Safety Report, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have Finance Committee report. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Kelvin. The Finance Committee met on March seventh of two thousand nineteen. The entire committee was in attendance, along with Finance Director Steve Okins and Councilmember Fernando and the West Central Tribune reporter. So we did not have any public comments. The first item that we discussed, which does require action, was the removal of pending suspense special assessments. And I would like to defer to Mr. Okins to have a conversation about this. This was something new. You'll see the timeframes on here that this hasn't been dealt with for a while, so if you wouldn't mind just reviewing how we got to this, and then we do have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this was received from the city clerk's office. In the review of the project that is happening on County Road five for the apartment complex, it was discovered that there were some assessments that were past their useful life. And so the city clerk's office, along with the engineering department, reviewed all of the suspended and pending assessments that we have for properties that border the city boundaries and prepared the committee action form with their recommendation to write off those assessments that have exceeded their useful life, and that's the dollar amount that you see there of two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. After we reviewed it and discussed it, there was a motion to approve removing the listed and special assessments for the years nineteen seventy-four, nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-eight, in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. And I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve removal of pending and suspense of special assessments for the years of nineteen seventy-four, nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-eight, in the dollar amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Mesky.
Not being part of the conversation from this committee, are there a lot of properties that have this kind of a value sitting on them, of these special assessments, if we haven't dealt with this for some time?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there is, there is an additional approximately five hundred thousand dollars that would be in addition to this amount that are on-border type properties. And we certainly can supply that to the next Finance Committee where those are located.
Councilmember Nelson.
Mr. Okins, would you like to review how they're on the books and how they're being removed? I think that was helpful at the committee level when you explained how they were being held and, and what this actually is doing.
The, the way that deferred or suspended assessments get on the books are that when there's an improvement project, and if there are properties outside the city limits, they are deferred or suspended and remain for that debt service or that bond fund until that bond is paid off. At the time that the bond is paid off, then the community investment fund purchases that receivable. And those are used if the properties are annexed in or ever received into the, the city corporate limits and are compared to the current year prices, and the assessed, the properties then are assessed on the higher of the two amounts.
And so then those dollars go into the community investment fund when they're paid back?
If they are paid back, yes. We have one property presently that have some ag deferments, which is another category that we are in communication with the property owner as well. If the council remembers when the property on the eastern part of the community was annexed in for Sweeters Project, we dealt with that in the same fashion at that time. So, yes, they are.
Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The next item was the Wilmer Township Fire Agreement, and we reviewed the recommendation to set the contract for two thousand nineteen at thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. This is calculated from a statewide formula and from the annual reports that we get from those townships with that. After review of the formula and the previous five-year histories, we had a motion to approve the resolution to set the amount at thirty thousand, three sixty-six, twenty-seven, and I will enter that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Wilmer Township Fire Agreement, the amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Next item was the Civic Center Bleacher Project, and we received a report on the replacement of the bleachers. This has been a project that's been around for a long time, and I think I will ask when we're done here just to review how we managed to be at a lesser cost than we thought we were going to be, because I think the bleacher structures or the size has changed, and it might be helpful for us to understand that. So we had a budget amount of three hundred and fifty thousand, and the contract amount is for one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. That does leave us with about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we will need to add a lift to the bleachers. That will be coming back for our review, along with wall, repairs to the walls that need to be made. I will enter that motion. Actually, before I do that, I would like to hear if, are you, do you want to do that, Mr. Baumgartner?
Yep. Mayor, member of the council, what we did at the Civic Center is that we reduced the size of the bleachers due to the Warhawks being in town. They put the deck over it, so we moved a section of bleachers out there. They also have a shed out there, so we removed a section of bleachers that way. And there was also another section of bleachers that we took out by where the handicap ramp was at, because we couldn't pull it out anyway, and we never used that section. And so we just like, well, if we're not going to use it, why replace it? So we were able to reduce the cost that way. Also, the Civic Center staff will be taking the bleachers out as well manually, so we save about ten thousand dollars that way.
Thank you, Rob. This is a bid that came through the state contract with, the name of the company is Seating and Athletic Facility Enterprise. And I would make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the agreement for one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve authorizing execution of the purchase of the bleachers for the Civic Center with the amendments as presented. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to give a kudos to, to staff specifically on this project for finding ways that, that dollars could be saved. We discussed for a few minutes about the idea that staff can actually do some of the work, and that'll save us money because they're familiar with the equipment and familiar with the, the, the items that are out there and what it takes to get it done. And also, they discussed a little bit how they're going to be reusing as much as what they can of what they pull out of there. So we're not going to be just landfilling everything. And we think that's kind of cool that if there's lumber that can be salvaged from there and used for other projects, which they already have ideas for, that's also another pretty cool thing. So we're quite impressed with that, and like I said, hats off to staff.
Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The next item was reappr, appro, can't speak, appropriation of the Civic Center funds. We were asked to reallocate dollars due to the restructuring of Community Ed and Rec. The budget needed to be reviewed for the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center. This, the dollars were over both last year and would be this year, and so with the budget needing to be reviewed, it was brought to us to reallocate the funds now as they plan for hiring for the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center. The dollars are there due to the distribution of the expenses for the rec department, and a motion was made to introduce a resolution to amend the two thousand nineteen and, and to reappropriate the funds as recommended.
Make that motion?
I do.
Oh, second.
Or didn't I? I'll make the motion if I didn't. I apologize.
Motion made and seconded to reallocate dollars from the Civic Center Funds to Dorothy Olsen Aquatic and Park and Recreation Funds for part-time salaries because they came over last year in their budgets. Discussion.
The amount was twenty-six thousand. I should have included that. I apologize.
Twenty-six thousand for Civic Center and twenty-five thousand for Park and Rec.
Twenty-six thousand from the Civic Center to the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center. And part-time salaries, yes, you're right. Twenty-five thousand, second part.
Councilmember Mesky.
And this is to adjust the current budget. I would assume that budgets going forward, these adjustments will all be made, and this will be now, this is like a one-time shuffle. I would assume we're going to have this now in the proper places going forward.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this budget amendment will take place, and as discussed at the meeting, we will be addressing the two thousand eighteen final numbers along with any quarterly adjustments, budgetary adjustments for nineteen at our future meeting.
Does that answer your question? Because I think specifically you were asking, because last year we heard all the time when we heard the reports at work session, well, we, we haven't been able to do this because we don't have the right format. So what you're asking is, do we now have the right format, so we're going to do it in a timely fashion? Is that what you're asking?
That's, it's embedded in that question, but it seems to me that you follow the money, and it tells the priorities. So I'm assuming that is what's, what I'm hearing. Maybe I shouldn't assume that.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just to clarify, in our discussion at the finance meeting, we asked to review the budget, because that budget has, has not, it was carried forward into two thousand nineteen as it was in two thousand eighteen. And the salaries at the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center were adjusted, but it was never adjusted in the budget. And so this is an adjustment to kind of reallocate how the, how the department is functioning now with that. We will come back with the adjustment for last year with that, but hopefully when we have the budget for two thousand twenty, we shouldn't have these adjustments in the detail. And the Finance Committee did ask to review that budget. I know they want the, this motion to be approved now, but we did ask for that budget to be brought back to us to be reviewed.
Well, the budget that the council was presented and accepted was the budget that was prepared by staff. It wasn't prepared, I mean, it's not, I mean, the mayor and the city administrator didn't prepare the budget.
I didn't mean to imply that at all. I just meant that the rec department wasn't set up yet at the time that the budget was done, and so those numbers were not in detail the way that we are being asked to look at them now. So there will be further adjustments in that budget, and I believe that's still being worked on.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Mesky? Councilmember Osmus.
No, she, I think it was, it was clarified. Mr. Baumgartner wasn't in place when the, when the two thousand nineteen budget was presented. Now he's aware of the budget, those, the change could get made, and future two thousand twenty budget, he'll make sure that the proper amount is put in for the lifeguards.
And I think what we're, what we're seeing here is that, I mean, we as a council asked for these to come in a timely fashion. This appears to be very timely for me. I mean, we're making the budget adjustment prior to hiring people, so we're not paying it out and then coming and saying, oh, by the way, cover, cover the money we just spent. We're allocating the money in the right, in the right, in the right flow. So this, this is very good. I'm not being critical. I'm just asking questions. Additional, Councilmember Nelson.
What you said is correct. It was brought to light because that wasn't done last year.
Right.
So we are over budget last year, and we will be bringing that back. But this was being proactive to make sure that they can take the right steps to hire the staff if they need and that it is in the budget appropriately, so.
Additional questions or comments from council? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well.
The next item is for review only, and it is the two thousand eighteen report of outstanding indebtedness. I apologize. Mr. Okins, do you wish to address that document?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an annual requirement that the city is required to do and file with the county auditor's office, and the, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four million dollars is what the city had at the end of two thousand eighteen, so, and the breakdown is, was included in the packet to the committee.
The next item was just to review our meeting schedule, and we will be meeting this Thursday on March twenty-first, and we will be reviewing the Rice Trust two thousand eighteen Activity and Balance Report. I know that it wasn't in Mr. Holland's email today, but that meeting is, and it is out both on the Dropbox and on the city website, the agenda. So just a reminder to the Finance Committee for the meeting coming up. We added a few other items to our meeting schedule, which we plan to do each meeting, and there was no other business that, to come before the committee, and so I will look for a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right.
Are you making the motion?
I am making the motion.
A motion made and seconded to file the minutes as presented. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye? Hold in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have Labor Relations Committee report. Councilmember Mesky.
Labor met on March 11th at City Hall. Myself, councilmembers Fagerly, Davis, and Schwantes in attendance. We really didn't have any new business, but we had plenty of old business that had been sitting out. I mean, waiting for lots of information to come in. HR Director Beckman did a wonderful job of putting together entire benefits and salaries on a spreadsheet that's been enclosed for your consideration. I think that will become very helpful, particularly when you move forward into the next contract negotiations because it puts everything on one page. We took a while figuring out exactly all the information that we needed. And I think kudos to our HR director for putting that together. Three things that we did address was department head sick leave policy, pay scale maximums, and the city administrator review update. I will tell you, I'll save the item that we're going to have some action on for last. But for scale, pay scale maximums, the question that was facing the committee was, do we pay any employees over what the maximum is, whatever the circumstance or however you would like to do that, whether it is a lump sum payment or et cetera. We did get legal counsel's advice on that. And the committee decided that we will not be moving forward with exceeding pay scale maximums. It does have an adverse effect on our pay equity reporting. And so, as there is no change there, you will not see a motion coming from us. And that item will now be off of our agenda. City Administrator Review Update, we had a recommendation that we include community leader evaluations in that process. And again, legal counsel said that the end, legal Minnesota cities, said that that was probably not a good practice to do. And so, we're going to take their advice. However, they said that those things happen through informal conversations with the council members. So, if you would like to share those things on your review form when you get to that point, you can certainly do that. But as far as a process that we're going to include as a process, we were advised to not pursue that. So, that is another item that we will not be considering. The other item that has been out there is the department head sick leave policy. We have been addressing that for a few meetings now, as you are aware, because it has come up before. The current policy says 820 hours for sick leave. And if you look at the other contracts after the last negotiations, there's a minimum for these different units of 840 and go up to 900. We had discussions of what would the magic number look like, et cetera. We understand the, there was arguments made that that hasn't moved for many, many years. And so, the compromise was to modify that policy to change 820 to move it to 840. That does match the lowest negotiated contract amount, but it does not achieve the 900. But that was the compromised position of the labor committee to bring forward as a motion is that we modify that policy to change 820 to 840. And it also strikes that strange verbiage about some data on there that was, it was a strange thing in there that was just a housekeeping piece that's tied to that. But the real thrust of it is, it is paying the 20 extra hours in compensation on sick leave. So, I would offer that as a motion from the committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to update department head non-represented sick leave policy from 820 hours to 840 hours. Discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
Now, just to clarify, that would not be retroactive to any prior employees that have left, would it?
That is not in the policy. The policy, we amended if we amended this evening.
And going forward.
That would be a separate issue that if someone wanted to address that separately, but that is not part of the policy change.
Okay.
Additional discussion. Is this, is this recommendation coming from our HR director?
Yes, it is. You see it on here? It's from, yep, Samantha Beckman, HR director.
Okay. Additional discussion. Councilmember, councilmember. I'm going to either promote you or demote you. City Attorney Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification for the council. This is going to be by resolution. We did get a resolution consistent with the committee's direction. I could certainly read the operative clause if the council would like to hear it.
I believe the council would like to hear it, right, Mr. Mesky?
The last sentence is probably all that's necessary in that statement.
The last sentence of the operative clause of the resolution being that termination or death benefits, sorry, I'm just going to tell you, the resolution would make the change that a non-union employee with seven or more years of consecutive service with the city would be granted a maximum of 840 hours payout of sick leave that would, at the end of employment, that would include by termination and/or death benefits.
Also, any questions after hearing that from our city attorney? Hearing that, roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight i's, zero n's.
We did also talk about some upcoming projects coming, compensation study results for general and public work unit positions, employee handbook and non-representative employee policies. We would also ask that if you take a look at that, if you have time to check out that compensation spreadsheet that was included, if there's any additional information that you think would be helpful moving forward into the future, we would like to hear that in a timely fashion so we can keep that thing modified and know what exactly you're looking for. That was the end of our committee. And if there aren't any other questions, I'd make a motion to file the Labor Relation Committee minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file Labor Relations minutes. Discussion. I just have one comment. I think that we really, I like that you're addressing the issue of the sick leave. I think that's appropriate to do. But I think there's a reason why those haven't been adjusted for a long time. And I see a trend in our local bargaining groups of increasing these hours. And what ends up happening is it puts us between a rock and a hard place because where our deficit really is, is in the total compensation that we pay our people. And we have a number of our department heads that, and I'll speak to them specifically, that are not compensated at the level they should be compensated. And it makes it difficult when we adjust these balances up to then come back because then when we look at total package, we look at the sick leave payout and we say that has X value, which we then add in. Because I mean, I've been in this discussions, as you have also, Councilmember Mesky. And then we hold their salary down because of that. And what ends up happening, I don't know about any of you, when you go home at the end of the day from working, you're more concerned about what your check looks like than how much you're going to get when you die or when you leave. And I think that that's an area that the council really needs to look at. And I really don't have a format to speak other than, in this format. So, I'll take that opportunity because I am not speaking to a motion. So, I do have, do have the right to speak even though I am a weak mayor. So, Councilmember Mesky.
Because we're a strong council, I'll throw this out there. That's exactly what you're saying is absolutely correct. And that's why we're putting all of those pieces on the table. So, when you take a look at the compensation, you're not just looking at it through one lens at a time that it's collective. So, I think hopefully, some of those things that may not look as equitable will start to fall into place. That's why I, again, will say, please check out that spreadsheet. And if there's additional information you need on there that you think is part of compensation or you want it to be considered in the future, get it on there. Because I think that that was something that was sorely missing. And I appreciate our HR director putting that together.
I know it was a lot of work, too. Thank you, Sam, for doing that. So, we have a motion to file the minutes. Additional discussion. Hold in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have Community Development Committee report. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The committee met Monday, March 11th at City Hall. Present was myself, Vicky Davis, and Kathy Schwantes. Sarah Swedberg was there, intern director of planning and development, and Shelby Lindrood of West Central. Item two, public comment, no one was there to speak to us. Item three, the TIF development agreement with J H LLC Apartment Project. Staff explained that J H LLC Apartment Project is scheduled to break ground in the spring of 2019 for phase one. The remaining issues to take care of at the council level is the approval of the tax increment financing development agreement. The city council considered and approved a tax increment financing plan for the project, which will consist of four market rate apartment buildings with 72 units each on County Road Five. The TIF district was approved for a period of 15 years, and it would be extended for three years more if all four buildings are constructed. It was estimated that the tax increment note to the developer would be issued in the amount of no more than $1,629,000. And if all four were constructed, it'd be $7,227,000. Staff explained that the insurance portion of the agreement is being modified. City attorney recommends that the agreement include insurance requirements so there is coverage in place in the event of damage. So, the city would be left with a quality project structure when granting assistance such as TIF. The city will obtain 5% for reimbursement of staff, legal, and administrative fees. The property has been annexed into the city and will be classified as R5. The 2019 tax capacity was $1,025, and an estimated annual gross increment of $108,600 will be generated. After discussion, the motion was made and seconded to authorize the mayor and administrator to enter into the tax agreement, development agreement between the city of Wilmer and J H LLC. And I'll introduce that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to enter into an agreement for tax increment financing between J H LLC and the city of Wilmer.
Now, I do have a question for the city attorney. Did all the items get addressed successfully by you and with them?
Yes. Mayor, Councilmember Fagerly, we've had, we've exchanged a couple drafts of this agreement with the developer. I understand the developer is engaged in attorney as well to look at this. As of the time I left the office today to come to this meeting, I hadn't heard through your Planning and Development Services Director or directly from anyone's attorney that they have agreed to everything we've negotiated. For that reason, I would recommend, and I think you have an updated resolution, Mayor, that would authorize approval of this contract in substantial conformity with the version that's in your packet. The city clerk has that for the mayor to sign. So, that would be a recommendation. I would, I guess, say at this point, I think we're most of the way there. We started with, we have done enough of these projects that we have a fairly well-refined TIF development agreement that we use. In looking at comments that we received back from the developer's attorney, we agreed to many of them. There is an issue about, as referenced in the staff report, the insurance requirements. Our recommendation is that the city does require that the property owner, that the developer maintain casualty insurance both during the construction period and after the project is completed so that the city can be sure that in the event there is casualty damage to the property, that it will be able to be reconstructed to a certain standard. So, my recommendation would be that the agreement be approved and giving us just the leeway to make some non-major changes if we need to at the developer's request before this gets signed. I understand this is fairly urgent from the developer's perspective, which is why we're proceeding this way. If I, I just want to make sure that the council understands how this agreement is structured. It's a little bit unique, given that it's a four-phase development. The, you know, the idea here is that there's going to be up to four separate structures with 72 units each. This agreement requires, actually requires, just that the first phase be built and that a TIF note be issued specifically for that first phase. It would then be the developer's election to proceed with phases two through four. And each time the developer makes that election, a corresponding TIF note would be issued for approximately the same value. So, it's really like we're approving four separate projects here, one of which is a requirement of this agreement to be constructed, that being phase one and phases two through four would be at the developer's election. The maximum period the TIF notes could remain outstanding would be 18 years. So, it'd be 15 years for phase one. And for each additional phase, the developer chooses to construct, that would extend it by one year for that note. Certainly, if the council has any questions, be happy to try and answer them. But the recommendation is that the council approve a resolution approving the agreement in substantial conformity with the version that's in your packet.
So, I'll make a motion for an amendment to my motion for this new resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for amendment to the tax increment financing development agreement as presented by the city attorney. Motion made and seconded. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It does mention substantial conformity. What is the process or is there a process should discrepancies arise in that, in that agreement? And who is, who or what entity is the deciding factor of what meets that litmus test?
I think it would be, Councilmember Plowman, it would be a situation where I would have to use my judgment about, is this just a relatively minor detail that we need to clarify to make sure this works for everybody as opposed to an actual major change in the party's rights? I would not unilaterally allow the city to execute a contract that has a significant change that would alter the city's position on this project. But if we need to adjust a clause or something to make it work and consistent, or if they raise something relatively small that we need to accommodate, we want to have the flexibility to make a minor change like that before it's signed.
Okay. So, if there was, I mean, just generally speaking, if something did arise, you'd be able to bring it back to us and we could discuss it at that time?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly, followed by Councilmember Mesky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Why would there be an issue with insurance in the first place? Because if they get a mortgage, the lenders are going to require them to have it. So, I don't understand that part.
Councilmember Fagerly, I agree with you. And I, for whatever reason, the draft that we originally received back from the developer had stricken all the language that we have in our standard agreement requiring that the property owner maintain insurance on it. It seems very unlikely to me that any prudent developer would proceed without that insurance in place anyway. The only thing I can guess is that their position was that, well, that's not the city's business, that's our business, we'll do it, but it's not going to be a legal requirement in this contract. You know, my position and my recommendation to the city is that you're required in the contract just for protection for the city to make sure that the project can be reconstructed. It's a condition of granting the public assistance you've chosen to grant.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been fielding a few questions. Every time one of these seems to come up, whether it's a TIF or a tax abatement, you hear from some folks that are confused by what those entities are and what those mechanisms are. We don't have to reteach it here, but I'm wondering if it wouldn't be wise to include some type of definitions of these or something on our website that's available? Because I know we have, we do several of these TIF districts of late, but we have done abatements where those might, one might be on our horizon. But people think those are synonyms, that they're, they're equal terms, they're interchangeable terms, and they are definitely not. And I think every time we have to do a reeducation of what they truly are, I mean, you could, somebody can talk to what the difference is if you wish at this point, but I really think we need something out there to help answer some of those questions and direct folks that have questions about those two very different mechanisms of what the hell they're different in, because this is not a tax abatement, this is a TIF district, which is very, very different. And so, I know I've just been fielding a few questions today. When I explain the difference, people go, that sounds, that's fine. But, because they think it's an abatement, but it is not. So... they think it's an abatement, but it is not. So, just a point of reference, I am, I think this is a fine thing, but it's that reeducation time again.
Additional questions from council? So on the amended motion to proceed with the agreement in substantial conformity, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Now to the original motion, which is to grant the tax increment development agreement between the city of Wilmer and J H L L C. Discussion from council on that question. Hearing done, roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmeus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Edi, Zirones.
That resolution passes. Councilmember.
And with that, there was no further business, so we adjourned at 6:27 PM. I'll make a motion to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes of the community development, community development meeting. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is consideration of statutory municipal liability coverage limits. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, annually, the city is required to pass a resolution to set the statutory municipal liability coverage limits for the city. In the past, the council has chosen to not waive the statutory tort limits and set them at $500,000 per claimant and $1,005,000 per occurrence. It is a recommendation to approve a resolution adopting the municipal tort limits as stated.
So there is a recommendation of staff is to approve a resolution adopting the municipal tort limits set at $500,000 per claimant and $1.5 million per occurrence. So someone to make that motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmeus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Edi, Zirones.
That resolution passes. Next is consideration of liquor license renewals. Ms. Thompson.
Annually, our liquor licenses need to be approved by the mayor and the council, and our applications are run from April 25th to April 25th of the following year. So what I'm bringing for you is to approve the liquor license renewal applications from April 25th, 2019, to April 25th, 2020, pending police department approval. And this is for all the establishments in the city of Wilmer that have liquor sales.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the liquor licenses as presented. Discussion. Councilmember Olson.
Just a question on the pending police department approval. Isn't that usually done before we approve them or not?
No, a lot of times it is pending police department approval. We get some later applications in, and we send it as a whole packet to the police department, and then just to allow them time to approve them, and once we get them back, then we can send them into the state.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmeus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Edi, Zirones.
And that resolution passes as well. I just have a question for the council. Staff had this on consent agenda, and when we went back to the committee process, one of the things that I heard the council say is that you kind of want to go back to the way business was done before. And so we still have left on the consent agenda any special permits that come up. So like, if the Blue Line Center wants to have a bond spiel, or builders want to have liquor out at the Civic Center, those are all on consent still. But what happened in the past is the liquor licenses always came before the council, as they did this evening, so that the council could see which liquor establishments were continuing operating. If the council wishes to have them on consent, that, that is staff's recommendation. I pulled it off of the agenda so that we could do it how we used to do it, but I would like some feedback from the council. Do you want it on consent, or do you want to see it in this, in this format? Is there any preference?
I'd prefer to see it and vote on it that way.
Okay.
What committee, we have been having, because we went to work session, we had people that were violation of liquor license, you know, things, selling underage. Before, what committee did that go to?
Finance.
Because I could see it going through finance and then put on a consent agenda?
It didn't, it didn't happen that way before. I mean, you certainly could do that, but I'm just looking for direction on how we want to do it as a council. I mean, we certainly can run it through finance if you choose to do it that way, but I think, I think that the council needs to see this. I mean, this is important business. I mean, you know, if you're going to get tripped up, this is probably one of the areas you're going to get tripped up. This is my opinion. It's opinions of the mayor.
I think this is fine.
So liquor license will continue then to stay, in this format, will come before the council once a year. The other ones will stay on consent, how you've been doing them in the past. Okay?
What question, if there is a violation, what committee does it go to?
Post to finance.
So the owners come into finance.
Correct. Am I wrong with that?
Wouldn't it be Public Works, Public Safety?
Huh?
They had gone to finance, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe, procedurally, because I'm not sure if it was, because they used to approve the liquor licenses as you're doing here tonight. Or I don't know if there was a charter or statutory requirement, I'm not involved with the liquor licenses, but they did go to finance.
Right, I thought they went to finance. They used to go to, they used to go to Public Works, Public Safety, but then because there was a financial component, once we changed the rules.
There is a penalty after the first violation, I believe, yes.
Right, and after, after the fine was put in is when it started going to finance instead of Public Works, Public Safety.
And then we invite the police chief to come and visit.
Correct.
When they are visiting.
Correct, yep. And sometimes the person who conducted the operation as well.
That's right, yep.
You good with that? Okay, with that, that passed, correct?
Yes.
City Administrator comments?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I have no comments. Councilmember, starting with Councilmember Schwantes.
Have a good night.
Councilmember Davis.
Pass.
Councilmember Alvarado.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Osmeus.
I don't think I have anything. Just, before I came to the meeting tonight, I was at the Legion Club for the smelt fry, and I just wanted to thank the Legion and the rescue squad for putting on that event, and it's for good cause.
Councilmember Plowman.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Pass.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There will not be a community development meeting next week. Sarah's gone. And then we got an email from the administrator. You had said there was a water issue at the airport. Was that the runway or the building, or what?
In their staff notes, the airport manager said there was some water in the building, not a big issue, but they were able to handle that. The runway, the taxiway there is about three inches higher than the building, and so that leaks in there. And then we also had a couple hangars, which are normal process, especially during the heavy snows, and the individual owners had to take care of that. But he just made that as part of his report, but nothing substantial, and certainly no damage to be reported or claimed.
Okay, so it was the airport manager that took, took care of the issue?
Yes.
Okay, it looked like Rob took care of it, and I was going to say.
No, no.
There was no break in.
No break.
Reineration notes and.
No, we didn't do that.
Okay.
You've got, he's got a lot on his plate. We don't want to add anything else, is that's what you're saying?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesky.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made to adjourn and seconded, we are adjourned.